But there's something that I think is just human nature in thinking about something like an earthquake that nobody knows when it's going to happen. It could happen tomorrow, it could happen next week, it could happen 100 years from now. I think it's sometimes hard before the actual earthquake comes for people to conceive what it's going to look like and what it's going to mean for their lives. And, you know, it allows people to kind of go along with this magical thinking of like, maybe we'll just dodge the bullet.
Like, it's a distant danger, not an immediate one, and therefore, I'm going to think about it on a different day. I'm not going to think about it today.
I mean, it's not unlike climate change in that it's this danger that people know is sort of looming in the future, but even if you're convinced that it's there, it's still, in your daily life, feels kind of remote. And in the meantime, you have other things to worry about that feel much more pressing. And so it's, I think, human nature to focus on the things that are right before you.
Right. But it's incumbent on government to actually force people to do the right thing, right? Collectively. But in this case, the Turkish government didn't. It actually made things worse, which leads me back to Erdogan. He's arrested these builders, but what about him? Will he and his party have to pay a price for this?
Well, the big test is going to be elections. There are parliamentary and presidential elections expected in May, and these are crucial for him. I mean, he would like to stay in power. He's been having a hard time in the polls this year, largely because of economic troubles at home. Lots of voters were quite mad at the way that he had been running the country before the earthquake even hit. And then they have, you know, this huge natural disaster that's killed all these people, and it's hard to see how that benefits him at all in this election. And so he's been, almost every day, he's been down in the earthquake zone with this very grave look on his face, wearing this long black coat, meeting with people who are living in tent cities, meeting with earthquake victims and seeing the rubble, and, you know, really showing this kind of tangible connection with this disaster that's gone on. And we're going to have to wait and see how that really resonates with voters. He has not spoken much about everything that we've been talking about, about how did all these buildings end up getting built that didn't seem like they were done right to withstand an earthquake? The most that he said is, "We, as a country, have things that we need to learn from this disaster, and we should do better in the future." That's kind of as much as we've gotten. But interestingly, what he's promised, I think the biggest promise that he's made to his people, is that we're going to rebuild. Basically, there's going to be more construction. He said that we're going to start in March, and he wants to rebuild homes for all these people within a year. I mean, which is a quite remarkable and incredibly ambitious, uh, promise.
So instead of saying, "We need enforcement, we really need to look at how we're doing this," he's saying, "Construction is the answer."
Yeah, there's really a doubling down on this policy that's been such a large part of his tenure. It's still, "Build, build, build, that's the solution." And, you know, Erdogan has proven over the 20 years that he's been on the national stage that he's a survivor. He's a very deft politician, and, you know, even with a challenge as large as an earthquake of this magnitude, there's a chance that he's going to push through and that he's
We are returning to our evening session for February 28, 2023. The board held its open session at 3:00 PM today, followed by a work session. So we'll proceed now with item L, public hearing and second reading of ordinances. L1 is the petition of Selco partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless to, one, amend the proffered condition, and, two, approve a special use permit for a broadcasting tower approximately 124 feet in height on approximately 4.81 acres of land zoned C2C high-intensity commercial district with conditions located at 2918 Peters Creek Road, Kataba Magisterial District. Mr. Thompson, Director of Planning.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. So the request you have tonight is for cell tower. Uh, there's a couple actions that need to be taken in order to make that happen. So, uh, real quick, uh, the proposed site is located off Peters Creek Road, kind of west of, uh, I-581. Um, uh, there's an existing, uh, public storage facility off of Peters Creek Road, kind of sits across, kind of diagonally across from the car max that's in the city of Roanoke. So it is located 2918 Peters Creek Road, a little less than five acres. Uh, the current use on the property is mini warehouse, and they're seeking a special use permit for the broadcasting tower or cell tower, and they also have to take action on existing profit conditions that are on the property as well. So a couple photos, this is looking from, uh, Peters Creek Road, uh, the existing access road. So it is a little bit elevated from Peters Creek Road, but they would share the same access. Again, this is kind of, uh, a couple photos, you would, as you get near the top, uh, the mini warehouse, when you go to the right, uh, the location of the, uh, broadcasting tower is going to be on the left, uh, you follow that road. So there's an existing road that goes back to Regional Stormwater Pond, um, and so it's going to be located next to, uh, that building there on the right. A little ways down, there's the access road that goes all the way down to, uh, the Regional Stormwater Pond. So, uh, a little history, this property was rezoned back in 1980, uh, from R1 to B2. Uh, there were four proffered conditions, uh, and the first one deals with the permitted uses and the site plan compliance. Uh, and there's one, uh, proffers that deal with screening, fencing, and allowing an on-premise residential manager. So obviously, as part of, uh, the conference of rezoning in 1992, the B2 went to C2. Uh, so it's C2C, uh, which has conditions on it. So we define a broadcasting tower as any structure that is designed and constructed primarily for the purposes of supporting one or more antennas. There's a lot of different things that it could be used for, but cell towers is typically, uh, what, uh, that use is defined as. Uh, it is only permitted in C2 with an approved special use permit, and there are use and design standards that apply, and those are, uh, contained in your packet. So, uh, there was a balloon test, uh, that was conducted Saturday, February 4th, from 10:00 AM to 2:00 PM. We had tried to do that earlier in the month, but due to inclement weather, we had to reschedule, and the applicant was willing to work with us. We resent out notifications to 150-plus property owners, letting them know when that would be. Uh, the concept plan, uh, you can see kind of the outline of the warehouse buildings, but the circle kind of shows, um, the lease area that they're going to be building, um, the cell tower at. And so you kind of zoom in, and, um, the broadcasting tower, 120 feet tall, four-foot lightning rod, at three antenna locations, uh, the lease area is 19 feet by 35 feet, and the fenced area is a little less than that, and they're just going to use the existing entrance, uh, and access, uh, for their access to the site. This cross-section kind of shown in the drawing, um, of the tower at 124 feet. They would take the top. There are co-location opportunities as well for future carriers. Existing zoning, uh, like I said, C2C, high-intensity commercial with conditions, uh, to the north is R2 and R1, so residential, um, to the east is R2 and C2, uh, to the west is C2 and R3. The R3, uh, is the Lawson Apartment Project that you all approved a couple years ago. And then south, uh, is C2, and then, uh, in the city is, uh, Commercial General and Commercial Large Site, uh, in the city of Roanoke. It is transition, it's a future land use area that encourages the orderly development of highway furnished parcels, serve as a buffer, um, so generally, the broadcast tower is consistent with our transition, future land use designation. Uh, the planning commission held a public hearing earlier this month. Uh, there were no citizens to speak during the public hearing. Uh, the, the planning commission applicant discussed who would own the tower and operate the tower, and that would be Verizon. Uh, the co-location possibilities, uh, there was a question about could they locate, co-locate on any other towers nearby, and there wasn't any, or they were already full, uh, and the purpose of the tower is to increase service in the area. So, the planning commission recommends approval of the proffer amendment. So the amendments is kind of the underline and strike through. Um, so amending the first one, because it deals with conformance to the site plan, so we would be adding the additional site plan, and also limited the use to only mini warehouse, so we'd be adding a broadcasting tower as part of the use. Poffers 2, 3, and 4 really don't apply, so they're not amending those. Uh, the planning commission also recommends approval of the special use permit with two conditions, conformance with their plan, and then also limiting the height to 124 feet is what, what they're asking for. So with that, I'll take any questions that you have.
I don't know that I have any, uh, questions of staff at this time, but do any others have any? Yes, Mr. Mahoney.
Um, Mr. Thompson, I'm not sure if this is a question for you or for the applicant. Um, I, I thought I recall with some other broadcasting towers, in some instances, there was a small building that was adjacent or nearby it, and, and, uh, in looking at some of the, the documentation here, I didn't see that. Did I miss that, or is that?
No, my understanding is, if you can flip up the thing real quick, I'll show you this real quick. My understanding is there will be a cabinet for equipment, and it will be in their 19 by 35 lease area. If you look behind there, you can kind of see a dash line as well. I think that is for additional cabinets of other carriers that would be allowed in the, in the future. Um, so I think it will be contained within their lease area, but I'll let them verify that for.
It just, my, my minor issue is just, is there sufficient space between the existing mini warehouses and the, the little driveway leading back to the stormwater pond?
And I'll let them.
And make sure there's no conflict with that.
Yeah, I'll let them verify that, but I'm pretty sure.
Anybody else have a question for staff at this time? I have, I have one quick question, Mr. Thompson, that, um, I thought of. Historically, Roanoke County has employed a specialist who will come in and verify the need. Was that done this time?
Uh, no. Um, there's a couple things. One, um, I don't know if you were aware that, uh, George Cadillas passed away last year.
Oh, I did not.
He was our consultant with Atlantic Technology Consultants. He, uh, so, uh, we actually had him, uh, under contract, uh, through, um, another locality, um, and we had piggybacked on their RFP, so I think they have closed down shop. Um, we need to find another, um, provider to do that.
I did not miss that.
Um, I will say that the state, um, General Assembly passed some laws four, maybe five years ago, to kind of restrict some of the information that we can now require for special use permits, and some of that deals with propagation maps and some other information. Uh, I think part of that is to, you know, want to get the technology and, I guess, clear hurdles for broadcasting towers to be built, so that the technology can get deployed. Um, so, in this case, no.
Okay, I appreciate it.
Because of that reason.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And so with that, uh, and there's no other questions from our board for staff at this time, um, I would like to go ahead and hear from the petitioner. When you come forward, if you would just state your name and address, please.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Charlie Alvis. I'm an attorney, uh, for Verizon Wireless with the law firm at Williams Mullen in Charlottesville. Our address is 323 Second Street Southeast, Suite 900 in Charlottesville. Uh, with me tonight is Mr. Samuel Laverne. He is with Network Building and Consulting, who helped with this site. Um, I have a couple of slides that are somewhat duplicative of what Mr. Thompson's already shared with you, so I may skip over a few details unless you have questions. Uh, this is the same picture you saw earlier of, of the overhead view of the mini storage facility. The star is generally where the tower would be located, and you can see the road going along the edge of the property line there. Same picture y'all saw before. Um, to answer the question that was asked, uh, there is sufficient space in here that's a little, I mean, sometimes you see these lease areas are a little larger, but in this case, given the constraint with where the building is and where the road is, they're able to make it work, um, and it's fenced in, and there will be some ground equipment next to the, next to the tower. Again, same picture that you saw before, um, 120 feet with a four-foot lightning rod at the top, no lighting. The, uh, top spot would be taken by Verizon's antennas, and then there'd be two other spots for other carriers or emergency services. I do want to share the pictures that we have from the balloon test. Uh, these were actually done before the application was submitted, so these pictures are not from February 4th. This was done earlier, and we submitted it at the time that the application was, was, uh, submitted to the county. But you'll see, they sort of start on the other side of Peters Creek Road and, and work in a, a counterclockwise fashion around the site, so I'll show you those. Um, this is an angle from right across the, the street there. Obviously, it's not right behind the building, it's to the side, but that's just the angle of, of the camera there. Um, this is one from Polly Hill Lane and the subdivision, um, back there to the, to the north, and, um, as you can see, it, it's visible but not overpowering the horizon. Another one from Nicholas Hill Lane Northwest. This is from North Spring Drive Northwest to the site, uh, that if you can, it's visible here, you can't really see very well on, on the screen, but there's an orange arrow pointing kind of right in the middle of that tree, and that's where the balloon was seen, but, and this is a photo simulation of the, of what the tower would be, but obviously, it's obscured by that tree. And here's one, again, from Peters Creek Road Southwest, and another from the Southwest. And that's all I have. I'm happy to answer any of y'all's questions.
This is from, um, my district, so I'm going to go ahead and jump right in, and I really appreciated you all being so kind when I went and, and checked out the balloon flight, and, uh, it was a really cold day, and you all were being the troopers, sitting out in the camping chairs, making it all work, and, and my husband and I came in with our dog and looked around for a little bit, and we appreciate, appreciated your kindnesses. We also drove around to those spots that you had outlined, and, uh, and I think that your photos are very accurate for what we saw with the balloon, and, um, and that I was, uh, pleased with how it did blend in, in most cases, um, with the environment. I wanted to speak to, or, or maybe ask you to speak to, the need, and I'm just curious on what level of, um, service? Is this just an improvement of service? Is this going to add additional users? Can you just speak to that?
I think the, the general answer, I don't have the specifics on what the engineers had in mind, um, but the general answer to this is that there are obviously more people using the service, um, you know, as, as demand increases for data and the existing network continues to, to be stressed by that. Um, you know, as you can tell, I mean, there's, there's a lot of residences back behind there in addition to the businesses along the highway there. So there's a lot of demand, and, um, there are towers relatively nearby, right? Some of them were not available to co-locate or were not going to achieve the network, the desired network results if they were co-located on. So this was the site that was, that was determined to be the best fit for the network needs. Um, and, you know, 124 feet is not an enormous tower, it's just, they're, they're doing just what they need to, to achieve the objectives.
I appreciate that, too. Um, so are there dead spots that will be recovered because of this tower, or can you speak to that specific?
I don't have that specific answer, but it, but certainly, the, the purpose of the tower is to improve the, the service for the users in the area.
Okay. Um, let's see.
I think the other thing was answered regarding the lighting. It will not have required lighting on it, but it was checked through with FCC and the FAA, and no lighting was required, correct?
That's correct. At this height, there's no lighting required at the top.
Okay, awesome. Any questions from fellow board members? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and, uh, open the public hearing at this point. Is there anyone who has signed up to speak?
I may not have anyone. Okay, so I will close the public hearing at this time, and, uh, I'm open to any commentary from my fellow board members, but if not, I'll go ahead and make a motion. Any commentary, any questions? So I'll make a motion at this point. I find that the proposed amendment of the previously proffered comm- condition is consistent with the purpose and intent of the county's comprehensive plan and good zoning practice, and will not be a substantial detriment to the community. I therefore move that we approve of the amendment to the previously proffered condition as follows. Site plan will be complied with as prepared by Byron R. Dixon and Tectonic Engineering Consultants PC for five buildings and a broadcasting tower as shown on plans, and use will be limited to mini warehouses and broadcasting towers. All other existing proffered conditions shall remain in effect and without amendment. Further, I find that the proposed special use permit, number one, meets the requirements of Section 30-19-1 of the Roanoke County Code, and that the proposed special use conforms with the standards set forth in Article 4, Use and Design Standards of Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance. Number two is substantially in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan, and, three, will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore move that we approve of the special use permit for the 124-foot broadcasting tower with the following conditions. Number one, that the broadcasting tower be developed in substantial conformance with the concept plans for VZW Westminster Rawland, prepared by Tectonic Engineering Concepts PC, dated July 14, 2022, subject to any changes required during the comprehensive site plan review process. And number two, the broadcasting tower shall not exceed 124 feet in height. And with that motion, I'd also just like to make the comment that I have, um, some citizens in my district who are desperate for better communication, um, and better cell towers, uh, covering their district. Uh, I feel like it's a safety concern in, in many instances, and so, uh, it is, uh, my pleasure to send this forward with a positive motion. Do I have a second?
Second. Are you trying to promote broadband again?
Yeah. Actually, so I have a second. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. Norworth?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?
Yes, thank you very much.
Petition number two, the petition of Engineering Concepts Incorporated to obtain a special use permit for a water tank, major utility service, approximately 42 feet in height, located on approximately 1.82 acres of land, zoned AG3 Agricultural Rural Preserve District, located in the 2600 block of Summit Ridge Road, Holland's Magisterial District. Mr. Thompson, again.
All right, a different kind of utility. Um, so what we have is a, uh, a water tank being proposed, uh, 42 feet. Um, we classify it as a major utility service in our zoning ordinance, so that's why you see major utility service, but it is a water tank. Location, uh, so this sits off Summit, uh, Summit Ridge Road, um, in the, you know, just north of the Bellevue subdivision, um, in the bonsact area of the county. Uh, it's part, and you can see, adjacent or part of the Reed Mountain Preserve. Um, I'll zoom in a little bit. So it's a 2600 block of Summit Ridge Road, again, it's 1.82 acres. It's currently a vacant wooded utility lot, and that was platted, uh, back in, I think, 2005 or '06, and they're requesting a special use permit for a 42-foot water tank. So a couple photos, um, the map on the right with the arrow kind of gives you the perspective of this, so this is kind of looking straight on of where the road would go into or the access road to the tank. Um, this is kind of looking at it, uh, from down the road of where that entrance would be. Uh, this is looking back, you know, on the, that easement and looking across, there's a house across, um, the way there, looking back at that. Um, and this is kind of going up the easement or up the utility lot, and you kind of see the house to the left through the woods, and then you can see the elevation as it goes up, um, on Reed Mountain Preserve, and it's kind of looking back down of the woodlot, so it's completely wooded around it. Um, so a little background, in 2005, uh, Fraylin Waldron conveyed a conservation easement to the Virginia Outdoors Foundation on 150-plus acres, which put in place certain restrictions in order to become the Reed Mountain Preserve. The 1.82 acre utility parcel that this water tank is being proposed on was then created in 2006. So the easement, um, on this parcel states that water tank would be allowable, and the easement restricts its location to below the 1620 contour line and its size to 150,000 gallons. So the water tank as proposed fits within these parameters. So, major utility service, it kind of has a whole gamut of stuff that fits in it. Uh, services of a regional nature, which normally entail the construction of new buildings or structures, such as drilling plants and sources, um, electric, electrical switching facilities and stations and substations, many wastewater treatment plants and similar facilities. Um, so it is, it does require a special use permit in the AG3 district, and they do have certain use and design standards that apply that are contained in your packet. So, um, water tank, 42-plus feet tall, um, 28 feet wide, again, the capacity would be 450,000 gallons, forest green in color, cylindrical with a conical top with an access ladder and a walkway on top with railing. And then they have a paved on the, that's the water tank profile in the middle, and then the access road is kind of on the right-hand side with a 10-foot paved access road that goes up to it. So existing zoning, uh, it is, uh, AG3, it's part of the Reed Mountain Preserve, so to the north is AG3, to the east is AG3 and R1, to the west is AG3, and then to the south, obviously, is R1. Mostly, uh, neighborhood conservation, there's a slight bit of conservation, but a future land use area where established single-family neighborhoods are delineated, and the conservation of the existing development pattern is encouraged. So, you know, I think this water tank will provide service. standards that apply that are contained in your packet. So, water tank, 42-plus feet tall, 28 feet wide. Again, the capacity would be 450,000 gallons, forest green in color, cylindrical with a conical top, with an access ladder and a walkway on top with railing. And then they have a paved on the, that's the water tank profile in the middle, and then the access road is kind of on the right-hand side, with a 10-foot paved access road that goes up to it. So existing zoning, it is zoned AG3, is part of the Reed Mountain Preserve. So to the north is AG3, to the east is AG3 and R1, to the west is AG3, and then to the south, obviously, is R1. Mostly neighborhood conservation. There's a slight bit of conservation, but a future land use area where established single-family neighborhoods are delineated, and the conservation of the existing development pattern is encouraged. So, you know, I think this water tank will provide service to another area for housing, which is, we've talked about, the need for housing in the county. So, public hearing again, earlier this month, on the 7th of February, there was one citizen spoke. He had raised a variety of concerns, mainly dealing with who was paying for it, and who was paying for connection fees. Was there the water tank expansion capabilities? And since this is being built at 150,000 gallons, and that's the limit you can go with the easement, it's not going to be expanded beyond 150,000 gallons. He was, and there was some concern about the existing water pressure on Summit Ridge Road that this gentleman who spoke had concerns about as well. Had no issues with the water tank's aesthetics, as part of, he did mention that as well. So, Planning Commission discussed conservation easement restrictions, ownership of the water tank after construction, water pressure issues, the gravity system from this tank, connection fees. They talked about that there was no expansion capabilities of the water tank based on the conservation easement. And again, they talked about the surrounding zoning and future land use designation. So, Planning Commission recommends approval of the special use permit for a water tank with two conditions. One being, the site shall be developed in general conformance with the development plan for Summit Ridge Water System, Plan Sheet 5, and that was what was shown, prepared by Lumpston Associates, dated February 14, 2007. And then the water tank shall not exceed 43 feet in height. And the reason for 43 is technically it's 42 and a little bit. So we just went up to the next height. So if you have some questions about that. So with that, if there are any questions, be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for staff? Any questions for staff? Is the petitioner here?
They are.
If you would please state your name and address.
Good evening, Madam Chairperson, members of the board. My name is Bobby Wampler. I'm the president of Engineering Concepts, located in Daleville, Virginia. Mr. Thompson pretty much covered all the details. There's certainly a long history to this project. This project started back in 2005. It actually received a construction permit from the Virginia Department of Health in 2007. It also received, basically, ready-to-construe from Roanoke County. It was basically pull your bonds, get your contractor, and let's have a preconstruction meeting. So the SGP somewhat came as a surprise as this project was revamped. I guess that was just slipped through the cracks back in '07, so we're here to hopefully get this across the finish line. Be glad to answer any questions you have. One point, you've probably seen the site, but the trees on site, on average, are probably 50 to 60 feet tall. So the bulk of the tank is really probably only about 33 feet tall. What increases that extra 10 feet is really just the cone of the roof and railings and whatnot. So again, bulk of the structure is about half of the height of the existing trees. I will read one comment from the VOF Foundation, which I think kind of summarizes the project, in that, "Based on the location of the proposed facility and surrounding forest area, which is protected from timbering, we would agree that the water tank, as designed and sited, will be adequately screened to minimize the visual impact of facilities in all four seasons on the Blue Ridge Parkway." So from an aesthetic standpoint, the VOF certainly has very high standards for visual protection of the area. So I feel like that has been met. And then from a service, this will provide a valuable utility service to the area residents. This will increase the pressures for developable land that's already zoned for residential by 100 PSI. That's not going to impact everyone. No one's going to, not everyone is going to see that increase in pressure, but it does increase the service area by 100 PSI for developable land. So be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions?
No questions.
Petitioner, any questions?
Why the delay for 16 years?
If you recall, 2008.
Yeah. We might be able to get it in underneath before 2008 hit.
Yes. It would have been built probably if it weren't for that, but yeah. Without a SGP even.
There you go. Interesting. Anything else?
I'd just like to add that this is necessary in order to move on with more housing in the Roanoke area, especially in the Hollins District and that area. So I think it's a good step forward in that direction, and will allow for more affordable housing for new visitors, new citizens, and others that wish to move up in their housing transition. And so I support this. Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I'm going to open up the public hearing. Is there anyone that has been signed up to speak?
I have no one.
So I'm opening, and now I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on. Any further questions or comments from the board before I ask for a motion? Mr. North?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I find that the proposed special use permit meets the requirements of Section 30-19-1 of the Roanoke County Code, and that the proposed special uses conform with the standards set forth in Article 4, Use and Design Standards of the Roanoke County Zoning Ordinance. Number two is substantially in conformance with the Roanoke County Comprehensive Plan, and number three will have a minimum adverse impact on the surrounding neighborhood and community. I therefore move that we approve the special use permit for the water tank with two following conditions. One, that the site shall be developed in general conformance with the development plan for Summit Ridge Water System, Plan Sheet Number 5, prepared by Lumpston Associates, PC, dated February 14, 2007. Number two, the water tank shall not exceed 43 feet in height. Thank you.
So is there a second?
Second.
Will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker? Yes, thank you very much. So we'll move on to citizen comments and communications. Any citizen comments?
Aye, ma'am.
Item N, reports and inquiries of board members. Mr. Radford, you are to go first tonight.
Yes, I want to speak to a rezoning that we had in my district a couple months ago, one for a grocery store on Brambleton Avenue. We've had citizens coming in and giving information ever since we've had that, and, you know, I think it's time to kind of talk from the perspective that, you know, our information needs to be heard. So tonight, and earlier, we heard from that resident again, and he brought up information that VDOT engineer Brian Belevins spoke about the rezoning, the impact on traffic in the area. Based on that resident's comments, I sent a request to Brian Belevins with VDOT, and he responded. And I'd just like to kind of read what he said, if you'll bear with me. He mentioned during the rezoning public hearing bravely that the neighbors have incorrectly used the speed study to compare with volumes in the traffic impact analysis. The speed study was never intended to count traffic and does not represent actual volumes on K-Spring Lane. K-Spring Lane carries approximately 2,300 vehicles per day, based on their 2021 traffic data. McVitty Road carries approximately 7,500 vehicles. Old K-Spring Road carries approximately 8,400 vehicles per day. In VDOT's opinion, it's not reasonable for them to require the developer and engineer to review the intersection because the volumes are lower and do not control the flow of traffic along the route to the development. In addition, it would not have any result, any changes to the recommendations from the study or VDOT's concurrence. He does not, Mr. Belevins goes on to say in the email, he does not believe it would degrade in operation significantly either section because there will be gaps in the traffic, which would develop through the area, even if cars didn't need to stop at the intersection any longer. So that's from Brian Belevins. Also, in the letter we heard today, the resident mentioned Supervisor Peters gave a primary reason for the vote that commercial developments results in road improvements that would not otherwise occur. Well, let me give you a couple for instances, and Mr. Peters is correct. The Radford family bought a piece of property on the intersection of Woodhaven and Peters Creek in the early '90s. That had no traffic light. The people, when we went to rezoning, they were hollering at us because they could not make a left-hand turn on to Peters Creek from Woodhaven. We went back to the tenant, who was going to lease the property, and we said, "We need to put a stoplight there." VDOT agreed. The tenant paid for half the stoplight. We had a happy outcome. And so you are correct, Mr. Peters. That rezoning resulted in improvement in road, the traffic flow through there. Again, it happened when we rezoned property over for Gander Mountain, when they came in. We put a stoplight in there. We improved the intersections. So there is benefits to rezoning, and it does get the attention. Also, the resident made comment that this property is not on Brambleton Avenue. Well, 280 feet of it is on Brambleton Avenue, and I would assume, looking at our staff, if that property is boarding Brambleton Avenue, I assume that's going to be the address. So I don't quite understand that. Anyway, that concludes my comments on the rezoning. I do want to finish up that the voting on that between Planning Commission and Board of Supervisors was eight for, two against. And we don't look at this stuff ahead of time and have big conversations. We're all free and independent. We can think on our own, and we can decide what's good and bad, and that's exactly what we did. Our vote on the Board of Supervisors was a little closer, three to two, but the aggregate is the Planning Commission looked at it also, and they felt favorable, and they voted 5-0. So that's where I'm coming up with eight to two on that rezoning. And one last comment I want to make. Happy birthday to my wife. I'll be home soon.
That was a good ending note. And so now we go to Mr. Peters.
I'm not going to hold him up getting home, sir. I have no comments to make.
Mr. North?
Well, I'm going to hold him up a little bit, because I'm going to have a few comments. Attending the Salem, Roanoke County Chamber Coffee, February 17th, at WDBJ Community Room, with guest speakers Congressman Griffith and Klein, I shared the hope for potential future airport expansion and federal support for 90% funding from the FAA one day, whenever the airport expansion may become a reality. On February 21st, attended the Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association, and heard our new police chief, Poindexter, make his first public introductory message. And so I think he's going to share some of that with us in the future. But in all, in all, he did a great job, and it was over 114 people there in attendance. That Greater Williamson Road Area Business Association has really grown in the last five years. Also, coming up in March, late March, probably March 22nd, if that date works out, the Roanoke Valley Allegating Regional Commission will gather for a discussion on the Catawba Hospital and the opioid grants and awards programs. So more on that as we move towards that meeting date, and a report out after that. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Mahoney?
Sorry, David. It's been a busy week. I have five things I'd like to talk about. Number one, Roanoke County has sent out a whole series of letters to landowners along Starkey Road and Ogden Road. This is part of the 419 Town Center Plan. Those letters have gone out and be notifying the property owners along there that we've hired a firm to do some surveying, to kind of look at what's possible out there, and then based on the surveys and the application of the Town Center Plan, maybe have some further discussions with those property owners for some improvements. The second item, county's also put out a news release telling our citizens about the proposed construction of the roundabout at Starkey Road and Buck Mountain Road, how the construction, we hope, will start sometime in March, and it may take almost a year, and we hope it'll be completed by the spring of 2024. Third, Mr. Blunt and I were able to participate in a Zoom meeting back on February 22nd. We're trying to get our Economic Development Department accredited so that Ms. Baker and her staff can brag and come to us, hopefully in a month, and talk about how they succeeded, and are now accredited nationally as an Economic Development Department. February 23rd, Mr. Kaywood and I participated in the Airport Master Plan Advisory Committee. You saw Mr. Kaywood's report to us last Friday. This is a process to try to communicate to the citizens in the area what's involved with this 20-year master plan that the airport is working on. This is going to deal with not just runways, but terminals, and roadways, and land use, and general cargo, and general aviation. This is very important for our region, not just for Roanoke County, but I think for the entire region. Airport is absolutely critical to our growth, our development, and economic development in our region. Finally, on February 24th, I think Ms. Owens, Mr. Kaywood, and I attended the police graduation. I think it was the 64th class graduating for Roanoke County PD, and the 84th class graduating for Roanoke City PD. If you recall, we've had our training program with Roanoke County and Roanoke City Police Departments. I think that fosters regional cooperation. I think it's a very positive step. I believe there were four graduates for Roanoke County, a couple graduates from Roanoke County sheriffs, and was it five or six for Roanoke City PD? So it was very positive. It was a good class, and I think it's important to see, despite everything that's happened over the last couple of years with respect to defunding police, I think our region does not believe in that, and you can see that with the great quality of the candidates that we have going through that graduation program. With that, I'm done.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. I want to say thank you for attending that graduation ceremony. I was out of town and unable to be there. I think it's important that we be there and appreciate what you're doing.
It was a full house. It was very nice.
That's great. Just a couple of notes, and then we'll hurry up and get out of here so that David can get home. So my first comment is that I also attended the luncheon that Mr. North mentioned, the Williamson Road Business Association Luncheon, and it was very impressive. And I was really encouraged to see all those businesses come together and together better their environment and better their business culture there. And I've mentioned it several times, and I'm saying it publicly now, I would love to see something like that organically started in the west part of, western part of Roanoke County, 11460. Let's gather those businesses together, and let's talk to see how we can improve that culture and help foster new businesses. So appreciate that. Number two, yesterday, last night, I attended the 200 Plan Meeting for, let's see, Mason's Cove, Glenver, and the Catawba areas, and it was at Glenver Middle School. We had 37 people there that attended, and it was, I would say, it was a great success, good conversations. And I think people were still trying to digest all the material, all the information, but it was overall, I think, a great success. We'd like to encourage the citizens who are listening to consider coming to the remaining meetings. We have one tomorrow night at the Peters Creek, it's the Peters Creek Community Planning Area tomorrow night, Green Ridge Rec Center, Bonsack, Benton, and Mount Pleasant Community Planning Areas will be Monday, March 6th, at the Benton War Memorial, and Windsor Hills Community Planning Area will be meeting Wednesday, March 8th, at Hidden Valley High School, and Back Creek and Bent Mountain Community Planning Areas, Monday, March 13th, at Bent Mountain Center. So all of these meetings are an open-house format from 4:30 to 6:30 p.m. There was a short presentation about 5:00 p.m. It lasted maybe 25, 30 minutes, but it was very good, very informative. And of course, you can learn more about it on our website at roanokcountyva.gov/200plan. So thank you for that. Please consider attending. And with that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
And a second?
Second.
And will the clerk please call the roll? Mr. Peters?
Yes.
Mr. Mahoney?
Yes.
Mr. North?
Yes.
Mr. Radford?
Yes.
Mrs. Hooker?